All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the September 20th, 2016 meeting of the school board of the Dover School District. If you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Brit- Mrs. Britton, here. Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahouser?
Here.
All are present.
First on our agenda is presentations and celebrations. Mr. Cherry?
No formal celebrations or presentations at this time. I would like to thank Dr. Metzler at the intermediate school and all her students. I had the opportunity to go down to the York Fair on Friday and was literally blown away by the number of displays that our intermediate school students had put up there. And also, and we also received the highest award there, so I wanted to thank her and the students. And next month, we will start our staff celebration, so our instructional leadership teams will be selecting individuals from their building, so I look forward to bringing those staff members to our meeting and celebrating with them next month.
Any questions for Mr. Cherry? Okay, moving on in our agenda, our next category is communications. We have our student report. Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm Sophie Barnes, I'm the junior student representative. Our senior representative Julie Fox is very sorry she couldn't be here tonight, but she had a soccer game that she had to go to, so. For Dover Elementary, they had a very successful start to the 2016 and 17 school year. Grades K through 6 have had back-to-school assembly programs as a part of the Proud program. The instructional leadership team presented our team goals at the September faculty meeting while serving breakfast treats to the staff. This year, faculty members will be recognized on a monthly basis by our faculty for making positive contributions to the building. The school bus race has started to encourage appropriate bus behavior on a daily basis. Also, every Friday, grade-level students are recognized as Proud winners. The PTO has decided to purchase Proud t-shirts for all of our students. Our soaring Eagles program recognizes classrooms that receive positive comments from other staff members. Now, for Lybe Elementary, they had a great start to the school year. The interior hallways, lobbies, and restrooms are freshly painted and have brightened the building. Our Encore Department coordinated cross-curricular project culminating with an Olympics Day on Friday, September 9th. Thank you to Mrs. Craig and her high school health and PE students for helping with the Olympics event. On Wednesday, September 14th, our kindergarten teachers hosted the kindergarten curriculum night for parents. The Lybe PTO will be hosting a book bingo night on Friday, September 30th, and that's from 6:30 to 8:30. On Tuesday, October 4th, the Lybe PTO is sponsoring a friendly outdoor staff dodgeball event that begins at 6:30, and all the proceeds benefit the Dover Area Food Bank. And the admission is a non-perishable canned food item. For North Salem Elementary, on September 8th, North Salem Elementary hosted a family fun night and ribbon-cutting ceremony at the North Salem Elementary Playground. The students really enjoyed the new piece of playground equipment the PTO purchased for the school. On September 16th, the North Salem students participated in team-building events by participating in the Dave Unger Game Day. Each year, the North Salem students and staff members donate money to the Dave Unger Scholarship that is awarded to a Dover senior interested in pursuing a career in elementary education. Some upcoming events at North Salem include the following: an Eagle Walk, Proud Monthly Rewards, a visit from the Dover Library, a visit from Representative Seth Grove, and the Ag Mobile Milestone Celebration Event. For Waggles Town, the only thing so far is that the PTO will be holding a community night at Chick-fil-A on September 27th from 5 to 8. All the proceeds will benefit one of the students who is battling leukemia. For the elementary's, for the, sorry, for the intermediate school, the intermediate school is off to a great start this year. The web leaders welcomed the new 7th grade students with a day full of activities, games, and of course, food. Thank you to our web students and our web advisors, Mr. Kennedy and Mrs. Leedy, for another great transition day for our students. Our 7th grade students participated in the Round Top Mountains Rope Course Challenges, and that was on the 12th and the 13th of this month. The students were very appreciative for the opportunity to spend the day doing such great team-building activities in the rope challenges. We are currently in the planning stages with the PTO to determine our 8th grade trip, and that should be in the spring. Our JA Yes Day is scheduled for October 18th. Each of the board members will be receiving an invitation to join and possibly participate in the day's activities. Our fall sports teams have started their season and are extremely excited to be out on the field competing again. And lastly, for the high school, the Link Crew opened the school year by hosting our 9th grade students on the first day of school. Link Crew, the Link Crew leaders facilitated team-building exercises as well as provided an orientation for the school. We also hosted our first community night prior to the start of the school. The event featured parent camp, building tours, a general session highlighting our high school core statement, classroom visits, meet-the-team night, and our performance by the marching band. The high school parent advisory council is currently beginning a review of our feedback provided by parents during our hackathon. This feedback is being used to formulate a parent innovation plan for the high school. The student advisory group will begin this process later this month to develop a student innovation. High school staff members have been engaging in daily professional learning during collaborative learning community time prior to the school day. So far this year, teachers have engaged in hands-on learning of digital applications, identified core learning goals and questions for our professional learning communities, collaborated on development of student learning objectives, and they've begun data review within content area departments. Samantha Patton, our new library media specialist, has been working with students and staff to reallocate print materials from the library, which is soon to be known as the Innovative Learning Center, in preparation for updates to the learning space. Students will be voting on the color of the walls in the new Innovative Learning Center later next week. DAHS was well-represented at the York Fair. A number of students participated in agricultural events. The marching band performed in the grandstand, and several students competed in the household category. Emily Eckard received numerous awards, including Best of the Best for her wall hanging. Also, Toby Gobler was recognized this week by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation as a commended scholar. He received this honor for achieving one of the top 50,000 scores out of 1.6 million test takers on the PSAT. And there are several big events coming up in the high school in the month of October. First off, our community pep rally will be held at 7:30 on October 5th. The homecoming football game will be at 7 on October 7th. The Secretary of Education, Pedro Rivera, will be visiting the school on October 11th to spotlight the agriculture education program. And we will also facilitate the PSAT and host a college career readiness event on the morning of October 19. And that's all we have for the schools for this month.
Thank you, Sophie.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that I'd say that's all. That's quite the extensive list for the first month of school, basically. A lot of great things happening there. Any comments or questions from board members? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Sophie. You're welcome to stay, or I know you probably have activities or homework or other good stuff to take care of, you're welcome to go as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is our first public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you have an interest in commenting on anything tonight, please feel free to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Peters, 298 Bermudian Church Road, East Berlin. Making a career of this. I felt I had to clarify some aspects of the article that appeared in the York Dispatch. Most importantly, the statement that I questioned the need for the intermediate school to be updated. In fact, I believe it does need to be updated. What I do not believe is that it should be demolished. Perhaps it should be expanded if that is the need, or if this is just a temporary problem due to disproportionate sizes of grades. I don't know. There's a lot of information that would be nice to know associated with these sort of things, you know, I mean, why is, is the temporary classrooms being used and, you know, so forth? I remember in the hearings last year, under oath, it was stated that there was empty classrooms in the high school and the intermediate school, and that the Dover schools had a capacity without including portables of 4,800 students, and a current enrollment of slightly over 3,400. I believe in conservation of recycling, not waste. Geothermal HVAC, solar panels, and the government subsidies and grants associated with these endeavors could certainly help in these projects. Perhaps, I was, I'm referring to the, to the article, you know, and it lists so many things on there that are wrong with it, many of which I, I just think should be fixed, not demolished. I've, I've got a problem with that. At any rate, you know, if additions are made, do them in a manner that they can be built onto in the future, and older areas could be removed or repurposed. There was mentions of, of the auditorium being used for, for band practice and chorus practice, but it's also being used for storage. Well, surely we can find somewhere else for storage, but, you know, auditoriums were always used for practice of that nature. That gives them the proper way of hearing things. In the hearings with Washington Township, two major reasons the PA Board of Education denied the transfer was the statements that there was plenty of classroom space, no new buildings would be needed for many years, and Dover could not afford to lose the revenue from Washington Township. I don't know what to believe anymore, you know, because this was just last summer. And as a lot of you are aware, I don't see how we suddenly changed and are on a different It has been stated that, that taxes, if this were to proceed with a new high school and demolishing the intermediate school and redoing the old high school, the taxes would only go up, oh, about $200 on average. I'm not sure if that's per year or total or, or what, but I'm not sure where the rest of the money will come from. It is unclear, and I know you're still looking into it. But is it perhaps that taxes are, are high enough now that, that it can cover the costs of that? I know that, that I have heard that Dover School District is the highest tax base in York County. So, you know, maybe that's the case. I don't know. Love to know these things. I understand that getting and keeping good teachers can be problematic. What with teachers' union and seniority hierarchy, and perhaps we could do something to improve that, to, to, maybe incentives for good performance in the form of awards, bonuses, not controlled by the union. Again, it is so complicated and often political, I don't have a chance of, of learning it or figuring it all out or understanding it, but I can ask questions, and hopefully someone better and more knowledgeable than me might pick up on it. I, I don't know. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. If you could provide your contact information to Mr. Cherry or Ms. Benko, whether email or phone call.
Sure.
There are some things there that I think could be easily addressed, you know, as far as like the tax rates and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Rachel Mundus. I live at 2065 Fish and Game Raid. I have some questions about my 11-year-old son's bus stop. I have been addressing these for many years. We are at the age now where Jacob can get himself ready for school, and I can finally work. Okay, now, these questions I'm going to ask, if you, whenever you can come up with an answer, you can call me or whatever. Why is an 11-year-old Jacob expected to walk a half a mile from his home in York County to his bus stop in Adams County? Why is 11-year-old Jacob expected to walk from Dover School District where he lives to a half a mile, a half a mile up the road into Bermudian Springs School District where he is picked up while three Bermudian Springs School District buses are coming by my house every day? Why is Jacob, Jacob expected to walk a half a mile to and from a bus stop on a road that is 18-foot wide, has barely enough room for two cars, the cars have to come to a stop in order to pass each other, has no berms, has no painted lines, has no sidewalks, and has no speed limit signs? Why should Jacob be asked to walk alone a half a mile to and from his bus stop when Megan's Law website states that there are two child molesters within 1.2 miles from that bus stop and one within 1.6 miles from that bus stop? There is a gun range within 1/8 of a mile of that bus stop. I went around my neighborhood and I've talked to everybody in my neighborhood. Adults do not even walk that road without pepper spray or a weapon, and I'm sending an 11-year-old child on this road for a half a mile. Okay, why can't our child be picked up at his home like 98% of the other students? Which I can probably answer that, because this is a big fight that is unsafe. It's also unsafe for my child to walk this half a mile, and when you come out to look at my road, you will definitely see what I'm saying. The road has no side at all. Drop-down gully, two foot deep. So, I mean, even if he would get hit, he'd lay in a gully. So, last question. If this was your child, your grandchild, your niece or nephew, would you let him walk this half a mile? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Mundus. Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, Crystal Burkhimer, 212 Mine Bank Road in Wellsville. I'm also an employee of the district. I came tonight because we have something that affects us, and not only myself, but all of our students at North Salem. It's on page 3 of mine, I have no idea what it is on your computer, but it's the elimination of job positions of Jennifer McGurn and Lori Missinger. They're two temporary aides for second grade. What I've been told is that because we have lost enrollment of two or three students, their jobs are being eliminated. What I have found out is that basically we want them to take other positions in our district, like PCA positions. And while I know we need PCA positions, I see it in our building, we also need aides. If, if you look, it's very simple to see that we are one of the lowest paid. I'm not here to complain about my pay. Totally love my job, love my building, love my principal, and care about everybody there. We have an awesome building. And you can ask our parents. What I am here to say is that by eliminating those two positions, not only does second grade not have an aide, they will have to share with other aides. Other aides will be pulled in to do the job that those two ladies are doing. When I think about that, I am a 4th grade aide. I strictly stay with 4th grade. We have a new program this year where we do lunch with our grade also, which is so cool, because not only can they get away with it during class or try to get away with things at lunchtime, I know them, I'm with them the whole time. So, I know what their day's like, I know what their family is, I know lots of things about them. And Jen is like, most aides are, and they're our kids. So, she feels like she's being pulled away from her kids. They're also kids that she was with in kindergarten when she was an aide at our building. And then last year, she did substituting, and then the end of May, I think, was hired to be an aide. So, I don't understand for two or three kids that we lost in second grade, I'm not sure if you realize what an aide does, but they are tremendous help to the teacher. When I say things like, "I'm just an aide," they're like, "Stop, don't say that." We have so many students in our building that need attention, that are either not at grade level or have behavior issues or things like that, that I cannot see that a position that is basically, I'm going to guess, this is a wild guess, but maybe $10,000 or $12,000 a year is being eliminated for all of our students. Because what happens is, the first grade aide is going to have to cover second grade. Mrs. Espin, Shade, and I will have to cover a lunch and a recess, which then pulls us out of our 3rd and 4th grade. So, there's like a domino effect. Not only is it because I like Jen and she does a great job with the kids, but there are other students and teachers that will suffer because of the elimination of that job position. And I'm not sure if I'm reading this correctly, but it looks like we vote for that under several things and not just one line item. Maybe you can help me, I'm not sure. But when we have like this consent where we vote for five or six things at a time, that is very disconcerting to me because maybe we don't want that, maybe the rest of it, we're okay with it. Last time I was here, there were like 20 things on the list, and we just voted yes, and that was the end of it. And then that slide went away and we were on to the next thing. So, I'm asking you, before you vote to eliminate those positions, that you consider, I would love for you to keep both of them, but at least keep one of them so that our students do not suffer, which I know doesn't matter. I'm not sure that anyone could convince me that they will not suffer, because they will unless there is a person there to help them. Okay? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Burkhimer. Anybody else for public comment?
My name is Mark Moret. I reside at 1777 Rocky Road here in Dover, Pennsylvania. I have two sons that attend the Dover School District. I came here this evening just to bring up to the board a concern that I have, and it's in regards to a playing surface or a field. It's the JV Varsity Baseball Field located behind the intermediate school. The field itself has been in very poor condition, maintenance-wise, and there's some issues that I have, and you can see whenever you're there witnessing a game at certain times. Balls that are taking very bad halves due to the conditions of the field. There's a ramping, there's lips around the infield section that when a ball's hit to a player, it looked like they're going to make the play at the last second, the ball's ramping up and shooting past their head. I've seen players, not only here from Dover, but other schools that come here into our district to play, same things happen, taking some very bad, bad shots, if you will, to their body or are really concerned about playing. Not only with the feeling of the ball, but the base paths themselves where they would run down to the bases. There's a foot, foot and a half, you can't round the bases. I've seen kids falling down, just rounding a base, just trying to run because of the poor conditions that are there. Obviously, my, my, my sons do play the game, so I know I sign a waiver of liability every year. So, obviously, it is a concern for me to have some sort of focus on that, that surface. Obviously, I'm not asking for a new playing field. However, I do feel the infield, that something needs to be addressed there, because it's going to be a matter of time till unfortunately, I think somebody's going to take a severe blow or injury there. With that being said, I didn't know if it would be open to the board or the district. I know there are some local professional companies out there that, that do free quotes. They do put in professional fields, things of that nature, to actually come in and do provide a free quote or their evaluation of that playing field, just to give maybe a, a starting point or perspective of what, what they see. I don't think anybody here, maybe there is individuals that, that do that in profession. I know I don't. But that would be something that, that, that would, it would be nice to be able to see how we could address that issue over there. I know with the school here, I think Dover does a great job agriculturally. I mean, I know I'm presenting a problem, but there could be maybe some other solutions. You know, I know community service, our students are really required to provide some form of community service. I know all the baseball players, they're like, "We would do it." You know, "We can come out and help to try and get this field where it needs to be." You know, I know there's different programs within the school district that deal with agriculture. Could that even be a project-type thing for, for some of the students to maybe enhance, you know, something along those lines? Again, that's just really my concern, is that somebody's really going to, and really, who's going to pay the price at the end? The student, but the medical bills also come to the parents also if somebody tears up a leg or any things of that nature, so. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, that it has been talked, you know, in the community for a number of years, and it's just fallen on deaf ears. The response is, "Well, there's no money," and that's pretty much where it goes, and it just dies, dies, dies at that point. So, again, just wanted to get on the record here that we need to address that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moret. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing nobody in motion, we'll move on in the agenda to board president's communication. First item under that is the announcement of our executive sessions. We did have an executive session which started at 5:30 PM today. During that executive session, we gave Mr. Cherry his performance evaluation for the past school year. That will be posted publicly for everybody to review within the next day or so, so you can visit our website and see that information. We did also discuss other personnel items that are on tonight's agenda for consideration, and Mr. Cherry also provided us with an update on the Washington Township situation, where that stands in the state courts. As far as other communication items, I just had two things that I wanted to mention. First of all, I wanted to mention the back-to-school nights. I know they were mentioned in the student report. I had the opportunity to go to several of our buildings that night, and it was very exciting, a lot of good buzz in the buildings, so I'm really excited about this upcoming year, a lot of great things I saw those evenings. And then I also wanted to thank our staff for their professionalism and their compassion at Friday night's football game. If you're not aware, we did have two medical emergencies that actually happened simultaneously, one on the field and one in the stands. I thought the staff handled that situation, which was an extraordinarily strange situation for us to be in, extremely well, so congratulations to them for stepping up to their jobs with that. So, with that, we will move on in our agenda for the approval of the minutes from our August 16th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 16th, 2016 board meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Mrs. Benko, could we have the vote, please? And with nine yeses, the motion carries. Moving on, next item is our consent agenda. We do have two items that have been pulled from tonight's consent agenda that will be voted on individually. The first would be the appointments under the Human and Fiscal Resources category, and then we also have the graduation for the Grace Fellowship contract for graduation, which is under the same category as well. They will be individual votes as we go through the evening. So, before we begin, I would like to ask for any questions or discussions on the agenda items related to curriculum and professional development. Are there any questions or discussions related to those items?
I'd just like to get, I guess, some background, some clarification, what, on the first two items, College and High School St. Francis University and Seco and Cisco Academy, just not familiar with those, if I could get a little background information on those.
The Cisco Academy is a contract that we're looking for a post-secondary school, part of our computer technology program. We're offering a course where our students will learn industry Cisco certifications. Well, part of that Cisco requires you have a post-secondary partnership, and it's Towson, which is our closest one. You have to pay $500 a year, like, by the CT program, that if our teacher and students have any questions, that's our go-to to get any questions for their industry credentials, and it'd be a part of our curriculum.
$500 per school or per student? Per student involved? Per school? Okay, so that's one fee? Okay.
It's just a way of checking balance that our, our computer technology teacher is following the Cisco industry credential curriculum.
Okay. Thank you.
Our St. Francis partnership is for the music program, so they can do college and high school.
Specifically for the music program?
Yep.
And that's new? That's not something that we've had?
No, we've had that for a while.
Okay.
No. So, this is just our yearly renewal.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there any other questions in this category?
I have a question. Is the eliminations under this consent agenda?
Uh, the, yes.
Under 9-1?
Yes. Any other questions from board members on set item seven, section seven? Okay, we do not have anything under facilities this evening for consent, so we'll move on to the Human and Fiscal Resources category, category nine. Any questions related to those items?
The only question that I had, that I was just curious about, was the department chairs, what the procedure is on how those department chairs are, are chosen, what the, is that something the staff does internally and who makes the decisions on it? I was just curious.
Jared posts those positions and then interviews and meets with staff, and then makes them an offer. an offer and then those are names are submitted to us on a yearly basis for approval.
Okay.
It's, the school's driven, not, it's not driven by central office.
Okay, so the principal then, Jared makes the decisions then? Who's put in that position?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions in that category? Okay, that should end that because we do not have anything under Safe and Supportive Schools or Technology for this evening. So do we have a motion at this time to approve tonight's consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just wanted to make a comment. There's several personal leave requests on the agenda for tonight. That is something that the Human and Fiscal Resources Committee has added to their agenda for Thursday evening to take a look at that policy right now. Kind of gathering some input from that, kind of taking a look at the policy that we currently have. So just wanted to make you aware of that and it was kind of a last-minute addition.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Bangkok, could we have the vote, please? Could we take a five-minute recess for an executive session at this time?
I just have a question.
Let's take a recess. We'll recess for five minutes. Okay, we have a motion and a second related to the consent agenda. Are there any other questions or discussions at this time?
I just wanted to say that in executive session, because it was a personnel issue, we did talk about the aides' positions, the layoff positions, and just wanted to kind of bring it up here so that Mr. Cherry has an opportunity to explain a little bit more what he had explained to us in terms of how the aides work in the district.
Yep. So the two temporary aides' positions that are going to, that are on the board agenda to be eliminated this evening were created because we believed at one point in time that there would be an over-enrollment within the second grade at North Salem. So with meeting with Chris and also discussing it with his teachers, we thought it would be best to hire an aide for the AM as well as the PM time to support the second grade. On August 26th, I had the opportunity to meet with all the principals to review the data and their enrollment numbers and we realized at that time that the second grade enrollment had decreased to 74. Therefore, we weren't in any violation in terms of enrollment within that particular grade level. So wanting to be consistent with what we have set up in terms of systems and supports in other buildings in terms of aides, the recommendation was then to eliminate those positions then from the building.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? That would be held for public comment, period. Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Bangkok.
Uh, Mr. Eifert?
Yes.
I'm not sure if Mr. Cobb wanted to make a comment or if that needs to be held for speaking else.
I just wanted to, on the board, Mr. Cherry, today we moved on more students with 75.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Mrs. Bangkok. Okay, with five yeses, the motion carries. Next on our agenda, we will move on to the appointments, which have been removed from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the appointments as listed on tonight's agenda? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion related to the appointments?
I have a question. I have a question about the fifth-grade teacher at Wydles Town. Where is she teaching right now?
She's in Harrisburg School District.
In the Harrisburg School District? Because I see she's evidently a first-year teacher up there.
Yes.
Okay.
She's been a long-term sub in previous years.
I'm sorry.
She had long-term sub positions in previous years, so this was...
In Harrisburg?
Oh, actually neighboring school districts. She got a full-time teaching position in Harrisburg this year.
Okay. And there was nobody else that we could get because we can't, we can't get her for, what is it, 60 days? Is that how long they're holding her?
Right, and they're interviewing right now to fill her position.
Okay, so there was nobody in all of our long-term sub positions or anything in the district as such that we could not hire instead of waiting for this gal to...
We had, we had made an offer to an individual, but we could not come to an agreement on a salary.
Couldn't come to an agreement, okay. Okay, so do you have any idea when this young lady will be released? Well, once her 60 days, I don't know.
Right, I can get that date tomorrow and I'll check in with the individual and let you know.
And I'm assuming if they hire them, they'll release her right away and she'll come down?
That was confirmed through her superintendent, Dr. Burning.
Do we have a long-term sub in that position right now?
I believe so.
Or is it a day-to-day?
She's considered day-to-day, but it's the same person.
Same person? Okay. Oh, and the other question I had too was the, no wait, oh, here it is. The Melissa Nace, the learning sport teacher at the high school, master step six. Where is she coming from?
I believe she was coming from Spring Grove. I believe she also had a contract with the charter school, but didn't accept that. She has also been at Southwestern as well.
And we couldn't get anybody else for that position because it's master step six? Is that correct? Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have a question related to the student hires for district printing and advertising our program. I was just curious, I know Jen and I, we got together to prepare for tonight's meeting on the Human and Fiscal Resources Committee side of things. She said that this is something that does happen, has happened in the past, it's not a new position. But I was just curious what would be involved in it and what, how much time are we looking at that they actually do, you know, these kind of things? I'm just curious.
The hires are actually, they're considered interns, that they will do district printing plus outside of district printing. I mean, contracts outside, people come in from the community, doing printing jobs. It's all large format printing, T-shirts, different media printing. And they are actually have what we call a CT capstone, which allows for a co-op timeframe or an internship timeframe throughout the day. We determine three of those, it will not exceed any more than 15 hours a week. So it depends on their schedule, when they're available, that will be...
How do, do jobs come in from the outside? How is that marketed and how would somebody find out about that and engage these students? Word of mouth?
Yeah, we don't publicly promote it, but it's by word of mouth based on our students. In the last two years, they're work. The word of mouth is getting around that they're doing nice jobs. We're seeing more jobs. A lot of it goes to our PTOs, to our other student organizations. They also do print that, uh, T-shirts and stuff that go into our school store that's then bought by our students.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussions for this item? Okay, Mrs. Bangkok, we have a motion and a second. Motion carries. Okay, our second item that had been removed from consent agenda would be the Grace Fellowship Facility Contract. Do we have a motion to approve the Grace Fellowship Contract at an approximate cost of $3,175 for the Dover Area High School graduation on May 25th, 2017?
I have a question.
Is there a motion? We do not have a motion, so we got...
No action taken.
No action taken tonight.
Contract is not approved.
Okay. Moving on to our board assigned representatives, first item is Dover Eagle Foundation, Mr. Cherry.
The Dover Eagle Foundation will have its first meeting this Thursday, so we've moved the Dover Eagle Foundation to committee evenings, so that will be a separate meeting. We'll be discussing three items. One will be fundraising, what we'll be looking at possibly two major events that will allow us to generate revenue so that we can do the other two things, which are scholarships and grants. So all of those interested in coming out to be part of that group. Once again, we'll meet here on Thursday. We'll beginning, we'll begin at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cherry? Okay, York Adams Academy, Mr. Emig.
Our next meeting will take place next Tuesday evening. And at our last meeting, we had a Dover student that left our school district here and decided that she wanted to get her diploma, so she enrolled at York Adams Academy and she will be getting that diploma sometime this year.
Questions for Mr. Emig? Okay, York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
Nothing to report. We do have a meeting next Thursday.
Are there any questions for Mr. Delauter? Okay, LIU, Mr. Cherry.
Not at this time.
Any questions? Okay, Legislative, Mr. Ralhauser.
Yes, today I seen, I don't know if this interferes with Amy's report or not, but House Bill 1993 is a bill that the school districts can't have hotels and certain things reappraised. And they're asking for us to support for a no vote. And Senate Bill is 877. So that was the information I seen today.
Any questions for Mr. Ralhauser? Okay, PSBA, Mrs. Brenton.
Nothing specific to PSBA, but I want to elaborate on Charlie, what, about House Bill 1993. I have sources that tell me that the bill will be over tomorrow at the committee. It's scheduled for a committee vote tomorrow from the House Urban Affairs Committee. They're going to hold that over and try to work on an agreement between stakeholders. Going to be meeting with the executive director of the committee later in the week to get an update on the progress because can't obviously be in the stakeholder meeting. So I can keep you posted on that.
Questions for Mrs. Brenton? Okay, Dover Industrial Development Committee, Mrs. Herman.
There was just more discussion on the fiber optics, trying to get a system through township so that we could open ourselves up to more probability of having businesses move in.
Any questions for Mrs. Herman? Okay, Active Shooter Drill Report, Mr. DeChelle.
We had a meeting back on August 25th. Our next meeting is September 22nd and we had our first parent information meeting at the back-to-school night at North Salem on August 31st. That's everything.
Questions for Mr. DeChelle? Okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Mr. Cherry.
And part of this will be done with Jen as well. So we wanted to review with the board Thursday's meeting, where we will be inviting five architect firms to come present some information for us so that we can begin to further kind of decide which architect firm we'd like to bring back in October to have a more, or to have a deeper conversation with. So I'm going to turn it over to Jen, who's going to go through the process that we went through as a central office to take the poll of possible architect firms from 11 down to five.
Okay, so I wanted to go through the process in which we use to select the five architectural firms that we will be bringing to you for presentation on Thursday night during the planning meeting. So first, I'd like to start out with a timeline recap. If you remember back in July of 2016, we had approval by the board of directors to allow the formation of a design team for the construction and/or renovation and also approval by the board of directors to approve, to put out a request for qualifications for architectural services. On July 26th, that request for qualifications for architectural services was posted. We sent it out to architectural firms within a 40-mile radius of our district. We also posted it on the district website. On August 1st, which was our, one of our deadlines, the district received 11 responses from various architectural firms that they were going to respond to the RFQ. So we wanted to know, yes, we're going to respond, no, we're not going to respond. We knew how much, um, information that we were going to be, um, to have to review. And then on September 1st, we received, um, we reviewed those, um, response for qualifications, our project team, and, um, we narrowed the potential candidates of the firms down to five to bring for your review, um, on Thursday. So first let's start with the RFQ review team, and that was handled by, um, Dave Nelson, our facility manager, myself, and also, um, then Mr. Cherry. Uh, the 11 firms that we had received submission for are up there. Um, First Capital, RPLS, Schrader, EI Associates, Core Design, Bugart Horn, Beers &amp; Hoffman, Moretta Unmanned, McKissick Associates, Crabtree &amp; Rohrbach, and Gilbert Associates. So what we did then, um, we created a rubric, um, for the, um, scoring of the request for qual- qualification documents that we had received. Uh, we utilized a couple of different categories, scoring each category, um, with a range of one to five, with five being a top score. Um, the first category that we, um, looked at, we looked at general experience and qualifications, which, um, in our scoring module was, um, weighted 30%. Uh, we wanted to know if they had a significant client base, um, here in Pennsylvania, if they had diversified experience in both educational facilities and other industries for both new construction and renovation, um, so we can get that broad, um, experience. Uh, we wanted to know if they had a portfolio, if their portfolio of buildings, um, showed imagination and efficient use of space and energy, and also costs, cost savings. We wanted to, um, see if they had award-winning designs to their credit, um, that they had a reasonable average cost per square foot on new construction, and also cost estimate per bid. And we also looked to see if they had similar projects, um, the same size in which ours would be, whether it be a, um, new construction or a, um, renovation of the IS or the high school. The second category we looked at, which was weighted 20%, was, um, if the firm had specific experience with Co- uh, Plan Con, which meant, um, we wanted to know if they had a wealth of experience in building and renovating schools in Pennsylvania. Uh, we, they, we wanted them to demonstrate an understanding of the Plan Con process, and we wanted to see their ability to assume responsibility for all the steps, um, that are required by PDE. The next category was the quality and content of the written presentation, which was weighted 20%. Uh, we wanted to see if the firm devoted quality, creativity, and excellence in its presentation. We wanted the presentation to be understandable, uh, clear and concise, and made sure it had all the requirements of the RFQ that we had put out in August. And we wanted to make sure it was personalized, showing that they had a general interest in Dover schools and the community here in Dover. Next up, uh, category was, uh, we wanted to look at their qualifications of their staff, which was weighted 15% in our scoring, uh, rubric. There, we wanted to make sure they had a large diverse staff of professionals that demonstrate expertise in all the disciplines associated with school design and construction. We wanted to see that their staff profile showed a mix of experience of both youth and, um, experience, um, in architecture. And we wanted to see that the individual resumes showed outstanding professional, uh, credentials, affiliations, maybe some awards for those architects. The next category was their firm history, which we weighted 10%. Wanted the firm to have a stable history as a firm, um, as a firm, is for at least 10 years in its current, present organization. We, um, wanted to see that the principals of the firm had been with the firm for most of their careers. And we wanted to see that their history was rooted in the Commonwealth and in municipal and school district constructions. Finally, the last category that we looked at, weighted 5% in our rubric, was the proximity to the district. We wanted to make sure that the firm, um, would have its principal office, eh, or firm headquarters within 40 miles of Dover and, um, house most of its design staff there. Because, um, when you get into situations where you're in a project and you need someone here right away, having someone four hours away and say, and calling them, say, we need you here, and then they say, oh, well, we can't, we're too far away, we'll be there next week. That's not going to be acceptable for a project of the size, um, or a renovation of the size that we would have to look at. So, um, that was our scoring rubric. And, um, based on our scoring rubric, the following, um, firms, there were the top five scoring firms, um, based on our team's rubric. These are in no specific order. They are RPL, RLPS Architects, Schrader Group Architecture, EI Associates Architecture, Crabtree Rohrbach Associates Architects, and McKissick Associates Arx- Architects. So what are our next steps? Um, our team's proposal, um, for, um, moving forward here, um, like we said, on September 22nd on Thursday for our planning meeting, um, we would propose that the board build consensus on two architectural firms to continue through our process. Prior to the October 20th, 2016, planning meeting, the administrative project team, uh, Mr. Nelson, myself, and Mr. Cherry, um, we would work with the two firms, um, if you narrow it down to two firms, and we would make sure that they have the information they need to present a formal proposal, um, and recommendations on a construction versus re- renovation to the board of directors. Um, so October 20th, then, um, at the planning meeting, the two firms would prevent, present that formal proposal and give recommendations to, um, the board. And you guys will have the opportunity to formally interview those two firms then. What tomorrow night's, um, presentations are, are more of the firms coming in and saying, this is what we do, this is who we are. On October 20th, and when, after it's narrowed down, then that would be the point where they would come in and we could, you would interview them, they would have a formal proposal, maybe some recommend- recommendations of where the district, you know, might want to go with the project, with a project. And ultimately, it is in your hands what you decide that you want to do. And then finally, um, after those, um, formal interviews on the 20th, then we come back here in November at the board voting meeting, and, um, we would propose that you would vote on an architectural firm, um, to be utilized in the planning for the future of the possible renovation or construction project. Do you have any questions? I know I kind of went through that pretty fast. Um, any questions?
Jen, I have a question.
Yes.
The, the timeframe between September 22nd, Thursday night, and next October, or next month, October 20th, is that realistically enough time for a firm to come back to us and present a formal proposal?
Um, I, I, in my opinion, I think it would be because they have been, you know, it's been two months. So you'd think that an architectural firm at that point would start maybe researching the district a little bit, um, when they put in their formal proposal. And then, um, after, right after it's narrowed down to, um, the two firms, or however many you choose, then at that point, we would schedule a walkthrough, um, you know, almost immediately with those two firms, um, so they could gather their information. They did turn around their, um, initial information quickly when, on the request for qualifications, and they did so without any real idea of what our buildings were like, because that's what we wanted to put out there. Um, so I believe that it would be enough time, and I, I think they have enough staff there, you know, at their firms, to pull information together and, and get what they need.
I was just thinking back to when Crabtree Rohrbach did their feasibility study. I think it was feasibility study. I think it was several months till they came back to us with that information.
Right.
So they would, they would obviously, if they were one of them that were chosen, they kind of have the advantage over the other firms. So I was just curious.
Right, and, and doing a feasibility study is the entire district where, um, the project, I mean, you have to consider those other buildings, but the project is one of two buildings that, that you would have to look at, and you're not getting it down into all those details and the requirements of PDE at that point.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, why, why not just have all five present to us? Why do we need to narrow it down to two? I, um, I'd kind of like to hear how much this, this project's going to come in for everybody and what everybody's ideas are, give us a, a little more to choose from. So I guess I'm wondering why we need to narrow it down. You've already narrowed it down. Um, so what's, uh, what's the reasoning behind narrowing it down to two?
I don't think there's any particular, uh, reason. We wanted to be considerate of your time, but if we're hearing that you would like to spend the time to do that, then we would just have to arrange probably an additional meeting, um, uh, in order to get all the interviews done. The average interview is probably going to be 60 to 75 minutes.
My concern about this whole thing is, from the way it's been explained, we're going to have five presentations on Thursday night. We're to mark a piece of paper as probably one through five as to how we rate them. Uh, then when the five are done, the papers are collected, and they're tallied up. I mean, the audience does not have an opportunity to comment. The people that are supposedly watching on television, since this is supposed to be televised live, can make no comments. Since this is not a rush job, uh, we're not under any time deadline. I move that we do not have to make a decision on Thursday night, that we make a decision in October, uh, because of that fact. And I've seen some comments, uh, other members have put up, they think that it's a non-despot decision. And I just feel that's the way it is. Now, if nobody else agrees with me, I can accept that, but I'm entitled to my opinion.
So are you saying, Charlie, that you don't want to vote on Thursday to, um, to the two architects? You want to just hear what they have to say on Thursday, but not hold a vote?
Yeah, and then the way the board members can talk about it and get comments from the public, because this way it's all board, no public comments are invited, and that's what I feel. So if somebody. So that's why I moved that we push it to October, and if people agree with me to do it, and if not, I won't get upset.
It was stated that the community would have involvement in this. In this case, we're leaving out the community. So I'm not in favor of approving two firms on Thursday night, especially when we only get 15 minutes of their presentation, and then we're supposed to decide. Doesn't fly with me.
The, um, the packets that we received, is that pretty much the, the presentation that they are going to give?
I can't guarantee that. Um, that is what we based our, um, scoring on, what we had given you. I did ask the firms to, um, if they had an electronic presentation, a PowerPoint or anything that they were going to utilize on Thursday, that they please send it to me so I can make sure it works. Um, I have not yet received anything, so I'm not positive on that.
And Jen, am I wrong that you sent them a kind of a prescriptive flow for what they need to present, which would be slightly different than what they turned in initially?
Yeah. We, we did, we did give them a list of items that we would like them to present on.
So we did give them a format for what we'd like them to present?
So they could all be consistent in the information that you guys give, so you're not hearing two totally different, um, ends of the spectrum.
Mr. Amick, since you have that feeling, would you be interested in seconding my motion?
Yes, I'll second your motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there questions or discussion on this?
The, the firms that are coming, ha- have they been given this tentative timeline at this point? Or do they know nothing of what's happening past Thursday?
Yeah, we did, we did not give them a timeline after Thursday.
So when they come Thursday, they're expecting that two of them will remain and three will be gone?
Correct.
Chopped. Okay.
And we did also tell them that things can change.
Okay.
I guess my only concern, um, I mean, I kind of agree to a point with, with Mr. Ralhauser, uh, as well as, as Mr. Amick, but I guess at this point, I guess I don't know how, how do, how do we get the community involved at this point to narrowing it down?
I sent out a te- a text message that a global connect should go out, stating that these firms will be here on Thursday night, so the community can come out and listen to what they have to say. I mean, if you're not going to include the community, then why did you make the statement the community should be involved in this whole process? We're eliminating the community if we're not going to do that. And I agree with Mrs. Rittenmaylie. Why don't we have each firm come here, a specified time, and let's listen, and then we can ask them questions and narrow it down? 15-minute presentation is not going to do it.
And, and if you do a global connect, that's only going to get a certain portion of the community, too. You're not going to get.
Put it on the webpage.
The older people that usually are ready to comment on things, so, yeah. Well, but that's another place to, I don't know.
That's why they have newspapers.
Very good, Mr. Ralhauser.
Okay, Mr. Ralhauser, could you state your official motion for the record?
I move that we do not make a decision, uh, on Thursday night, that we do make no decision before the next regular board meeting, because we need time. There will be feedback probably from the community. I mean, they won't have a vote, but they can give feedback, and this way, uh, it's open to the community. I guess it's a pretty long motion to write. Just move that we postpone it one, till next month.
I have, I have your motion as, motion to move decision on consensus on two archer- architectural firms to October instead of September 22nd.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we had a second. Are there any other questions or discussion on the motion?
I, I just haven't, how, how will this, are there, what would be any negative impact of doing this? Just, just curious. I mean, is it going to harm any planning or any other aspect of the process by pushing that back?
No, I mean, the, the purpose of selecting a firm in the end will allow us to come up with a best-case cost scenario. So without us ever getting to that point, we're never actually going to be able to answer kind of the hypothetical, what is this really going to cost us? Or what's in the best interest of the district in terms of a renovation versus a new build? So at some point in time, if we never get to that point, we're never going to truly know what the impact financially will be on the district. They're going to be the ones who will be able to make the designs and tell us per square foot what we think this is going to cost. So in, in the end, that's why we're selecting a firm, so that we can come up with that best-case scenario.
So we're not on any, we're not violating any timeline?
No, there's no state law, no state regulation.
Or anything that we can take our time to, to narrow it down so we can get to that point, but maybe not quite as fast?
The only Plan Con deadline, and I forget, I don't have the actual month in front of me, but when we submitted the Plan Con A, there was a stipulation in there that the reimbursement would be based upon breaking ground on any project, whether it be new renovation or whatever it might be, by 2019. Now, I'm not sure the date of that. So that deadline is kind of out there. I, I mean, that's up to you, to you all, though, to decide if you're going to base the project on that deadline.
I have two questions. For those of you that have spoken up and, and asked to postpone it for a month to get more community input, I'm sort of in the dark here a little bit about how community input can be engaged in this process at this, at this stage of the game. If there's, you know, elimination or trying to get a, a firm secured here to move forward, how can the community give us input? I mean, are, are we asking just to make sure everybody's notified that the process is happening? Or what are we? happening, or what are we asking the community to do? Is kind of where I'm at with, because I'm not quite sure what we can do at this point. I mean, we're just like in the preliminary stages of trying to find somebody we think we could work with, not even move ahead yet. So what are we asking the community to do in the, you know, comments that were made tonight about getting the community involved? What are we looking for? The second question is, once we do, once we make a final decision on which firms we're looking at, whether it be two, whether it be five, however many, at what point do they now start charging something? Is there, you know, is there ever a time when they start charging us for their fees? Like if we picked two or we picked five, now can they charge us for their services? Or when does that kick in?
We would have to formally accept a contract for their services before they can charge us.
So everything that they would do in the preparation and the presentation, that's all on them.
Correct.
There's no obligation on our part. Okay. So then the question about the community, what are we looking for for community input other than making sure everybody's aware of it?
And to follow up on that, too, are we getting too far into the weeds with that? I mean, they're five, and we're just narrowing it down to two. It's not like we're picking, I mean, I go back and forth. I can see Charlie's point and Rachel, but also I don't want it to be, I mean, because honestly, what, not, I don't know how to say, what are the, what would the public have to say that would be, I don't, I know what I'm trying to say, I just can't think of how to say it. I just don't want to micromanage everything, you know? I think, I don't want to stymie the process by trying to, you know, open something up that's not really going to, not that it, I can't think what I want to say. Well, I think opening it up to the community would give community members the opportunity to ask questions that we might not think of, that we could then in turn go and ask the architects, might have ideas that we didn't think of, that again would stimulate questions, would be informing them, the transparency thing for the community, which I think is very important. I mean, that's kind of how I'm looking at it. And I don't, I'm all for transparency. I get that. I just, I worry about, again, getting too far into the weeds and, you know, like I said, I can see either way.
The bottom line on letting the community comment, we have people here tonight that come to a public board meeting. And if we do it the way it's proposed, they come and sit here, they go home, they say, well, we can't even comment, because they've already decided. And people that watch it on television or find other things out can't comment, it's open for public comment. It's not that we're going to answer their questions. They can make a comment, well, you know, you should have looked at this, or maybe this is something else. But if we're going to have this as a community project, it has to be open to the community. And that's why I feel this is...
I'm not saying it shouldn't.
I know, but I'm just saying, that's why we have to have it, so they can have public comment in October.
Likewise, again, back to my original question, and what are we asking the community to comment on? How are we asking them to, you know, are we asking them to give us feedback then, if that is the case? Are we putting that out there that way? Otherwise, we're just...
That's kind of where I was getting.
Yeah, otherwise, we're just delaying the process. So I'm all about that, too. I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I'm just saying, you know, we want to invite the public, that's the reason we're delaying this. So if that's what in fact we're doing, let's make sure the community knows that, that we're engaging them and we're asking for their input. And how can they do that? You know, give them the vehicle and the tools to do that.
Question. I called question.
Do you have a question?
I called the question, no time to vote.
To Ms., I'm going to continue the discussion, actually. To Mrs. Maly's question earlier, you know, if we have this meeting on Thursday, and we have all five of these individual firms come in and present to us, and two of them are dogs, and three of them wowed us, are we locked into having just two, or could we say, we'd like to hear from those three? You know, and I just feel like, I'm not quite sure I understand what input everybody's going to have in just listening to fifteen-minute presentations about a firm, you know, at that point. I can see the greater discussion and conversations happening when we have these hour, hour-and-a-half sessions with the architectural firms. At that point is where I see the real deep discussions happening. A fifteen-minute thing is to give us a quick dog and pony show, to say, here's our firm, here's what we've done, here's our qualifications, how do you feel about that? I'm not sure what additional information we're going to gather from that, really, within the community. I think the community involvement, to me, comes when we're down to those two or three top firms in the end, and that's where we would really get the information that we're needing. So is that...
That's what I was trying to do, I guess.
That's just how I'm myself in visualizing this. Okay, now that I've said mine, is there any other questions or discussion? Okay, so we will have the vote, Mrs. Benko, on Mr. Rollhouser's motion that I'm not even going to try to regurgitate there. Okay.
We have a reading of the exact motion, the way it's presented, then, so we...
The motion is, oh, sorry, spelling error. The motion is to postpone the decision on the consensus of the architectural firm selection to the October meeting instead of September twenty-second.
And to clarify, that's not the actual selection of the firm. It's the selection of the two or three, or whatever it may be.
And it's not just two, if we...
If we decide we want to see all five, we'll have all five back.
Switch out of your PowerPoint.
Sorry, I'm sorry. And the motion carries. Mr. Cherry, any other items for superintendent's report? Miscellaneous category, comments or observations from the board members.
Yes. I had mentioned something to Mr. Cherry about the Alumni Association, and we've been trying for a year to get, we need an address so we can finish our process of getting our bylaws together. And he said, well, we have to do that, and then we have to follow the nine-fifteen policy. But the thing is, the nine-fifteen policy is for ones who are using the school building, so we're covered by insurance. And the Alumni Association is not using the school building, so I see no reason why we couldn't use the address for now and bring in our bylaws when they're finished, that the board can look at. But we can't finish until we have an address. And that's part of the, what I was told is the way it has to be done.
Right, because your request is for an outside organization to use our address on a public and legal document. Therefore, before we arbitrarily just allow organizations to utilize our address, I said the one policy that I believe that could govern that would be the nine-fifteen policy. I don't think we're in, we don't, we don't allow outside organizations to just allow, to use our address so that they can complete applications. So I would feel more comfortable if we used a nine-fifteen policy. That way, we could gauge their information and also make sure that while they utilize our address, we have some information about that. I think it would be suspicious if we had an organization that we knew nothing about utilizing our address on their application.
So what you're saying is, we submit some of the information before it's completed, you would be acceptable to that?
According to the policy, they would need to submit a letter to them to be approved by the board. Once they are approved by the board, then they would be allowed to utilize the address.
But how do we get the application filled out without an address?
You have to be approved by the board first.
Well, see, we're not getting my point.
Well, we're not getting one another's point, and I'm just simply saying, in order to utilize our address on a legal document, you need to be approved by the board to actually do that.
We need a mailing address.
Pardon?
We need a mailing address. So you have any suggestions what we could use if we can't use the schools?
Post office box.
The what?
A post office box.
I'm assuming that what you need is a registered address in order to file your articles of organization with the state, or articles of incorporation with the state?
Yeah.
So you need a physical mailing address in order to do that? And the idea there is so that you can be served in the event that you're sued. That's really why you need to have a registered address, and it can't be a P.O. box to do that. So that's probably what the juggernaut is, is that you need a mailing address. I will say, you could use a registered address that's somewhat temporary. It could be your association president or someone like that, and then you can amend the registered address for five dollars after the fact.
Okay, thank you. Okay, my next item here is information people are requesting, asking, and comments have been made about, it's two hundred dollars total for the eight years increase in taxes. So the information that was sent out the other week, I sat down and went over. In 2018, this is all proposals now. This is not actual, I'm just stating proposals, that if we go through with two thirty-million-dollar bonds. In 2018, a quarter of a mil would be a tax, would have to be increased to make the covered debt. This is just not taking money out of the other funds. This is just to cover debt service. Right now, we have three point two one mils of our total millage in the district goes for debt service. And under this proposal that we were given, using a hundred thousand dollars as a average assessment, makes it easier figuring, the first year, the taxes will go up twenty-four dollars for every hundred thousand dollars of your assessment. The second year, it would go up forty-seven dollars for every hundred thousand. The third year, seventy dollars. The fourth year, ninety-three dollars. The fifth year, a hundred and eighteen dollars. The sixth year, a hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The seventh year, a hundred and sixty-two dollars. And the eighth year, a hundred and eighty-four dollars, which makes a total in them eight years, your taxes would go up eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars if you had a hundred thousand dollar assessment on your property, because that's round figures, it's easy to figure. So then we go from three point one mils of our millage. When we get to year eight, we're at five point two eight mils we need to cover our debt service. And then the total of net debt with figuring, well, this is down a little now for this year, but it's forty-nine million for the one thirty-million-dollar bond, and the other one's forty-seven billion, which makes, if we would spend that kind of money on a high school, that would come up to about ninety-six million dollars of total debt that we have to make up to pay the interest and the principal. That was the information that was provided by our service. And the question is, how much do they charge for the bond service?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question. How much, like, bond issuance costs are we going to have? There is no way for me to look into the future to know what the bond issuance costs are going to be.
No, I meant what the company would charge that's doing the work, or that you wouldn't know until they write the bonds.
Yeah.
I could jump in there. That's going to vary a lot.
Yeah.
The costs include the charge to the company that's going to issue the bond, and in your case, historically, it's been RBC who does that. There's bond counsel that charges a fee, you have to obtain insurance. There may be certain kind of parameters where you have to maintain certain kinds of special trust accounts. It just depends on what the financing looks like overall. And then there's regular counsel fees. So the costs of a bond vary, and then you've got your, you know, the interest rate can vary. So the price, the placing cost, it really varies, but it's all built into the amount that you borrow. So it's not out-of-pocket expense, it's built into the total borrow, all the costs, whatever they may be. And when you have actual numbers, then you'll get a quote that includes the cost for that particular issue.
And the other thing is, that I didn't point out, we go to six point five million dollars a year to debt service. Right now, we're at four point three million. So another two and a half million, basically, would have to come from raising taxes or depleting money that you'd use for education, because we do have a fund, but if you're going to take two and a half million dollars more a year, the funds will go off fast. Now, I'm just pointing out information that was presented to us in April, and answering some, trying to get some information to people who are asking me what the deal is.
You good?
Well, the only figure I forgot here, then, over the next fourteen years after the eight years, you'd have to pay twenty-eight hundred dollars more than a hundred thousand. Not a year, for the fourteen years, which is two hundred dollars. And I'm done.
Just a quick question. I know a couple weeks ago, the after-school activity bus started. Do we have any kind of report of usage?
I'm slow to begin with, and we'll get the numbers, and I can send it to you as soon as I get them.
I have a follow-up question from something I asked last month about the cross-country team and other sports gym, whatever, being able to use the golf course.
Yeah, we're trying to schedule a meeting with, is it Georgia? Is that her name?
Georgia.
Yeah, so we're in the process of scheduling that right now.
Okay, I just wondered where that was. Okay. Because I guess there are some concerns about the current cross-country course.
Yeah, there's always been some concerns about the safety and so forth.
Like the other sports teams cutting off the runners as they're competing, and cars driving wildly into the parking lot, and parking on the cross-country course. So this, having the golf course would certainly alleviate some of those issues.
So we've been trying to set up that meeting.
Okay, thank you. And another question, just out of curiosity. I'm new to school board, well, not new anymore. I guess I'm almost coming up on a year. But I guess I'm wondering, when and why did we switch to a consent agenda? Has it always been that way? Because I didn't remember it being that way before. I understand the why in terms of saving time, but I guess I just wanted some feedback about that, because sometimes I don't like the consent agenda either.
So, most boards that I've ever been associated with typically had a consent agenda, because there were just some items that you do each and every month, pay bills, things of that nature. So, instead of actually looking at each one of them individually, you kind of wrote them up into a consent agenda. But board members always have the right to pull any piece of information they'd like from consent agenda prior to, to the meeting. So, even the fact that our president goes over each one of those areas typically isn't done. Typically, there's just a motion at the beginning of the meeting to approve the consent agenda. Consent's done, if there's no other items, typically, the meeting's adjourned. If there's not, then you go back to talk about each one of the issues individually. But two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
I'd like to discuss the graduation at the church. I know we, nothing happened tonight about that, but I think we need to discuss that a little bit, because it's probably gonna come up again. I think we need to be really careful with that, after what we went through with intelligent design. We have to really alienate ourselves from religion. And my faith is very important to me, but it's not right for us, a public school district, to in any way align ourselves with religion. So, and I know that it was said that the last time they used that church, that things were covered, so that there was no indication at all that it was a church. But, you know, if you put yourself in a position of something that you feel extremely strong about, and you're against that, and suppose they open their building up to us, and allow us to go in there to have a graduation, and cover anything that remind, would remind me of, of the items that I have such a strong feeling about, I would have a hard time going in there anyway. It's still the idea. We send our children to a public school, and if any, even one child has parents that are atheists, any type of, have any type of background that keeps them from having the faith that many of us do have, they, they don't wanna, that's not right to have that graduation. Something that is so important in a child's life, graduating from high school, and to have them have an uncomfortable experience that night. I don't know if they still do it or not, but when I graduated, they had baccalaureate services. Do they still do that? You don't even know what I'm talking about, do you? Okay, that shows how old I am. Okay, well, they used to have, you went and you had a religious, oh, good, Terri, thank you, Buster. Oh, Rachel does too. And you would have a religious service, and if you wanted to go to that, you had that opportunity, and if you chose not to, that was fine. But as far as graduation goes, that's too important to every child in that high school, every child in our school district, to go, to, to have it in, in a facility that does not match what we, what we ourselves preach as far as being a public school system.
Well, and I have a question as to why, I mean, I thought it was a beautiful graduation on the football field. I, I don't, I mean, I, well, I mean, should have an alternate, but I mean, that's like, one of the best things about graduating high school, for me at least, was being on the field of my football team, or, you know, my football field, and, you know, that school pride, on school grounds.
Mr. Wassler, Mr. Wassler's here, so he'll take it back to the students and they can further investigate.
The problem with having an alternate is you have to book that in advance and pay for that. So, let's say you want to have it on the football field, and it ends up being a beautiful, glorious day, great, but you still have to pay to rent a building that you might have as an alternate.
And none of our facilities in the school district are big enough? Not to them?
The largest stadium has is in the auditorium, and I can only give out about three tickets per graduate. In the stadium, I was able to give out around 25 per graduate, but I can tell you, we're the only graduations Saturday morning, the ones that were Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday night that week, when it did not rain, still all moved inside, because there was enough of a threat for it. So, we would, last year, I'd have to tell 25 people from each party, you can't attend graduation. I'd probably have about three to four hours to do that in. And I was not in the gym, we had it before my, so it was the gym, just kind of an untenable sweatbox during graduation. We don't get a lot of head shakes up there, so.
Yes, I've been there, done that. It was awful.
I mean, all, my, our alternate was the, our auditorium, so I take it, our auditorium is not near.
It's not, it's not large enough to accommodate the graduating class and their guests, without really limiting the amount of people involved.
Looking, looking back to, I, I experienced some, both at, on the, with my kids, on the football stadium field, and at, down at the Utz, Utz Center now, keeps changing names, I forget which was the most recent, but, and at the church, two years ago. And I understand where you're coming from with, with the comments that are there. It could, it has the potential to be offensive. I heard a lot of very positive comments that night as well. And having gone through multiple different venues, I can tell you that the stadium one was the most uncomfortable, the most, I felt that the class was cheated, because that night, there was a thunderstorm bearing down, and they literally raced through the whole ceremony. And I thought, you know, after 12 years, this is their day to shine, and it was very disappointing. So, my second daughter was the first year that they had it in at the Utz Center at that point, and the, the comfortableness for elderly to get around, to be in there, to enjoy the evening, was much, much better, much better. And I would vote to have it somewhere other than the stadium if I had a choice, just because of that reason. It's not being, you know, disloyal or anything like that. It's because of, you know, they, they need something, they need a nice night, where they don't have to worry about other things, like elements to come into play. So, if there would be a venue that could house enough to not have to turn people away and let all the family members come in, I'd say go for it. But, you know, I know the cost of renting out that facility in there is, is quite a bit more than what this proposal came to us for. So, I hope there's somewhere that they can find some sort of a solution.
And does student council pay for that? Is that, who pays for the, who pays for the graduation facility?
It comes out of the general fund.
The high school budget?
The high school budget, yes.
Get out your checkbook, Mr. Wassler.
Has there been any thought as to reach out to any facilities, or, you know, find sponsorships for, you know, like, in the actual graduation flyer to help reduce costs of somewhere? I mean, that's always a possibility, too, just to throw it out there.
We'll work with them, and we'll, we'll come back with another solution.
The other thing with early graduation this year, you could check on, it's very expensive, but it's convenient, is I don't know when they, car show rents the fairgrounds for, they rent for 10 days or two weeks when they bring the car show comes in. The last, you know, we ran into that problem, the car show was still there, and the kids can't wait. I know VOTAC holds their graduation there every year after the car show is over. I don't know if the possibility with the 25th, what the fair has scheduled, it could be looked into. But it's very nice in there. There was a couple of us last year at the graduation that didn't have the proper headwear on.
Why are you looking at me, Mr. Ronhouser?
I was looking at Mr. Cherry.
Sure you were.
Do you feel guilty?
I was a little red after that.
Well, and if, we're getting out of school earlier this year, so I, and I don't know what goes into all this. I just know that I, I feel, I have very strong feelings about going to a church, but I don't know if we could get it earlier. And I know we can graduate the seniors, but we lose subsidy for every, is that correct? Something about they lose subsidy for every day that they're not in school, that they're supposed to be in school. So, it's.
Child accounting we do.
Oh, child accounting, okay. And I don't know how much that is. I don't know what the big deal is either, but, you know, maybe we could get it in May earlier or something. I don't know, the Toyota Center, I know it's terribly expensive, but I just, you know, I just think that that's what we need to do. We need to do something other than having that church.
Or even reach out to the York County Economic Alliance and see what other venues are out there. I know there's an architectural firm downtown that, and I, I don't think it's a big enough venue, but there are places that we don't know of, maybe, that should be looked into. I mean, I'd be happy to talk to you guys.
Jared's running out.
With the connections.
We'll take it back. Anything else from board members? Okay, hearing nothing, we'll move on to our second public comment period. This is a two-minute period for items on or off the agenda. So, if you have anything you would like to discuss tonight, please come to the podium, state your name and address for two minutes.
John Peters. Several things were mentioned just, just earlier here. It was mentioned about information was sent out last week. How do I receive that information? I mean, I.
Can I, can I just respond real quick to you? All of the information that was sent out via request to the board members last week is on a, our website. Right on our website, there's a link, it's called Capital Projects, and it has all the information about any capital projects that are going on in the district at this time, or are in the process of planning the district at this time. Any and all board presentations that have happened in public meetings are out there. Anything, any information given us, given to us on, like he was talking about, possible, you know, bond issues for any, it's, it's all out there on that page of the website. If you would like, we could send you the link.
Okay. The RFP that went out to, to the architects, is, is that public? Or is that? I was invited to, to attend the planning committee on Thursday, and, you know, now I hear that this is coming up, and they're gonna be presenting based on the RFP that was sent to them. Is there any way to get hold of that RFP? Is that on this public?
Yeah, again, it is on that website, and it was also on a board agenda a couple months ago, in August, I think.
Again, if, you know, I am concerned about the new school and the costs associated with it, and that information, you know, based on, on that information, there are forms that, you know, the taxes are going to be rather excessive to support that building. So, again, I just think we really need to review this, whether or not we can update, repair, and so forth, what we have, rather than, than demolish things and just rebuild everything. I, I just, I just feel that's an important factor. We, we are getting hammered on taxes. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
I'm Emily Burris. I live at 4201 Clarimar Drive, and I'm a relatively recent imported over. Haven't lived here that long. I was a school counselor and a teacher prior to this, so it's not totally unfamiliar. I'm really concerned and har, a little bit horrified that there was no response to this lady who I met out in the parking lot, whose son is walking in an extremely dangerous situation. I don't know anything about it. I'm perfectly clear on that, but I don't understand how there could be no questions or no responses to her during the meeting.
A meeting with her afterwards.
Pardon?
A meeting with her afterwards.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Jen McGurn, 3108 Muirfield Road in Dover Township. And I just wanted to clarify with the discussion on the aid position, that I'm, I'm very fortunate. I was offered other positions, and I don't ever, I, I didn't want to ever give the impression that I was here to fight for a job in this district. I was here to fight for that job. That is the job I want. Those are the kids that need me. Those are the kids that I have a connection with, that I see every day struggling. I see the three teachers struggling every day to control this environment where so many of their kids are so low. So, I understand the vote was taken. It's such a great building, that's where I want to be. That's where I see the need. Obviously, there's a need in every building. There's someone who could benefit in every building from what I do, but these kids really benefit. And I benefit from them, because they're amazing, and they really need the help. And, and their teachers need it. They're struggling. So, I would love to say that if it goes up to 75 or 76, and that's the magic number, that I have a job again, but that, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McGurn.
Mr. Benton, Director of Career and Technical Education. I would like to formally invite all board members to two events that we are having in October in our district. The first one is October 4th, which is our Ag Mobile, that will be at the North Salem Elementary School. Ms. Barnes spoke about that tonight, but I wanted to just give you some dates and times. At 9:30 on October 4th, we will have a press conference. The Ag Mobile's been doing this for a little less than 10 years, but we will have the 1,000,000th student from North Salem to be attending the, the lessons that are taught in the Ag Mobile. I was approached the last spring about having this on our campus. They chose our school, and we actually changed our normal time when we have it in the year to house this. So, you are all invited to come to the press, press conference from 9:30 to 10:00 that day. From 10:00 to 10:15, there will be a photo op with all 4th graders. Nine students will actually hold up a digit to represent 1,000,000. So, and, but you're all welcome to that. On October 11th, you're also invited, from 10:00 to 12:00 that day, the Department of Agriculture, it's Ag Career Week. They highlight four schools in the state of Pennsylvania on October 11th. Our school has been chosen to be highlighted this year for our rich agricultural programs that we offer at our high school. We will have Secretary of Ed Pedro Rivera there to speak as guest speaker. We will also have distinguished guests throughout the state coming in to be a part of this. There'll be tours, there'll be roundtable discussions. We are finalizing that agenda here in the next week, but I wanted to formally invite all board members to those two dates. So, it's October 4th, from 9 to, from 9:30 to about 10:15, you're more than welcome to stay and see the first class go in session at 10:30, okay? And then, on October 11th, from 10:00 to 2, I mean, 10:00 to 12:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., you're also welcome. Okay? Thank you.
Will that be in the auditorium, or where will that take you?
That, the, there will be, the presentations will be done in the auditorium, but there will also be classroom visitations and tours taking place in that two-hour timeframe, too. We are, and I'll, as soon as I get your agenda finalized, I will send it to you. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Anybody else for public comment?
Not to beat this to death, because you're already made your decision, but I was wondering if there's a possibility for me to get, I think you said it was a policy because of the 74. If I'm understanding that right, is there a way that we could get the average North Salem aid hours per student versus all of the other buildings? So, we can kind of see what that's like. Because my understanding is that North Salem has the lowest amount of aid hours per student, and if that's correct, then I just kind of wanted to see where we stand with the other elementary schools, if we could do that. And then, regarding the architectural process, not only do I work for the district, but I graduated, I've lived here all my life, I know, it's just a scary thought. But I also have kids that are involved in sports, and I get told and asked a lot of things, and I'm not sure that you know, but as a board and as a district, we're not considered transparent. We're not considered community-involved. So, when you say that it's on the website, that really doesn't do justice. It doesn't do it for me, yes, because I'm on the website, because that's just what I do, and I have two kids that are technology kids. But there are a lot of people who aren't on the website, and don't know what is happening. And when they stop you and ask you, and you don't even know that two days from now, we're having architectural firms come in, that's kind of disheartening to me. I think that if you want them involved, they're not here tonight, because they feel like they don't. So when you say that it's on the website, that really doesn't do justice. It doesn't do it for me, yes, because I'm on the website. Because that's just what I do and I have two kids that are technology kids. Um, but there are a lot of people who aren't on the website and don't know what is happening. And when they stop you and ask you, and you don't even know that two days from now we're having architectural firms come in, that's kind of disheartening to me. I think that if you want them involved, they're not here tonight because they feel like they don't matter. Um, and I'm not directing that at one person, I'm telling you as a board, so that if there's anything that you can do to help that, um, I'm not saying it's you individually, I'm saying from years past, they feel like, and I don't, it's not one person that's told me this, they feel like, why should I waste my time? I'm not going to waste two hours, they don't listen anyway. They already have their decisions made. So, if you want to feel like you are welcoming and want the community involvement, I would say whatever you can do regarding the high school and the intermediate school, whether it's new construction or renovation, um, or anything that you feel like is a big thing out there. You guys are all parents and you know what big things are that matter to you. You're going to use millions of dollars and taxes are going to go up, and I don't even want to get in a discussion about that, they're going to go up eventually, they have to, that's just reality. I think the taxpayers need to know those things. So if there's anything that you can think of, um, in your daily travels or as a committee or an executive session, um, it would really be appreciated if the community were more involved. And I'm not, um, I'm not exactly sure exactly how that could happen, um, but I do know that they feel like there's not communication and there's not transparency. There is only to a certain extent as to what we want to allow them to, to know. So, um, just putting that out there. I don't like to be questioned about those kind of things. Um, it's one of those things that when you see that parent coming that you know is going to ask that question, you kind of like avoid them and like have to use the restroom or something. But just, that's the general feeling there. Chuck, did you want to say something there?
I'm holding my tongue.
Okay.
Actually, no, I'm not. Um, I, I think, and I hear what you're saying, and again, I've born and raised here myself, so never left. I, I think as a board, especially for this building project so far, I think we have been very transparent. Back in the summer, I think it was, we held a facilities tour on the weekend. Notifications were made out through, uh, Global Connect, it was placed on the website. Uh, I think Twitter was used to, to try and, and do, and, you know, broadcast that and get that out. You know, telling people, you can tell your neighbors, tell, you know, come on out, take a look at our facilities. We had 10 people show up for two different tours and every one of those people was a district employee. Um, you know, I'm, I'm willing, I, I think all of us are willing to do what we can, but if we put it out there, nobody comes and nobody responds, i- is that our fault as a board? You, you know what I mean? I mean, we're opening up our, our buildings, we're saying, come in and take a look at our, our facilities, see what, see what they look like. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't know, and again, I think we're all open to suggestions. If there's a way that we can get people to come to these places, man, please let us know, at least let me know. I'm, I'm more than willing to, to, to figure out ways to do that, but I don't understand, I mean, we're up here, it's our job, it's our responsibility to take the heat for that and I'm okay with that. My shoulders are pretty big and, and I can do that. But I think that sometimes, you know, people need to take some, I won't say responsibility, but the initiative themselves to, to, to be here and be involved. And I know you are, you, you do that, I mean, you're all over the place.
And I totally agree. And you're going to always have, no matter where you are, you're always going to have, we have it at North Salem, you have it in every school, um, whether you go to church, wherever, you always have that amount of people that say those things. But unfortunately, when it, it is now not just this cluster, this cluster is getting bigger. And having seen what has happened over the last 10 years, I hate that as, as a resident here, as a parent here, and as an employee here, where there's a lot invested, whether my kids are in sports or the gifted program or things that they do, there, I put a lot of investment in because I care. And there are a lot of parents that do, but in the same token, when you're told, well, they don't really care about what we think, whether that comes from previous administration, wherever that comes from, there's got to be a way that we can fix that or address it or at least be concerned about it and not say, well, we've done everything that we can. Because, believe me, maybe you have, but they're not feeling it. So, perception is like 90% of it.
I agree, I agree.
And that's where the problem is. Whether it's true or not, if they think it is, it is. Thank you.
Well, can I expand on that too? I, I, I totally hear everything you're saying. I think it's so important, transparency, we just had this conversation tonight. And I know, those of you that know me well, know that I like to talk. And I have been getting the word out as much as I possibly can. And I've been encouraging my son's soccer team moms and parents at games, you know, oh, this is coming up, this meeting, we're going to do this Wednesday, or we're going to do this Thursday. Oh, you know, here's what we're doing as a board. And they're all, yeah, okay, okay. And I'll say, well, come out, you know, come out and support it, you know, come out and speak your mind, come out, come to the meetings. And they're, oh, well, you know, I can't do this and, you know, well, maybe I'll see, I might be able to. And then I'll say to them, well, then send an email. Send an email, I mean, email us, uh, uh, come to call us, whatever, let us know what you're thinking. But beyond that, it's so hard. I still haven't seen any, I mean, I've been touting this since soccer started and, and when, like August, September, and nobody has, I haven't seen anything. So, I mean, I encourage anybody to, to talk, I mean, get, get the conversation out there. We want to hear from people, but they have to want to talk to us first. And, and I'm not saying that, like you said, I mean, there are some that, that do, but then there are a lot that have opinions and they, they get all excited, but then when it comes down to it, they just don't follow through. And why that is, I, I really, I wish I knew.
Put it out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brenton. One comment I'll make on what's been said about this technology. We have a lot of senior citizens in this township that don't even know how to operate any of this equipment. If I wouldn't be on school board, I probably wouldn't even know how to operate it yet because I never had any need for it. There's people that cannot get cable and they don't know, and that's why a lot of people get the newspaper, older people, to read what's going on. Well, it's very seldom, I don't think there was anything put in the paper this week, for this week, about either meeting this week. If it was, I don't, wasn't in the Daily Record, it could have been in the Dispatch. And I don't believe there's anybody here tonight to report.
That's a huge challenge right there, is getting the newspapers to cover everything. We could send out as many press releases that we want to send out, things like that. It's up to them to publish it and get it out there. So we're sort of stuck.
I understand what they're saying.
Under their control, so that's where one of the struggles is. I know we've had newsletters in the past, you know, hard copy newsletters. Obviously, there's an expense associated with that, but maybe that's a conversation we have to have as, as a board, is whether or not we'd like to invest additional dollars into old-fashioned communications too, to help get the word out there. I think we have to look at an overall communication strategy. I agree with Mrs. Brenton, you know, the communication is a two-way street. People have to talk to us as well, you know, and, and I hear the rumblings out in the street and I do the same thing that you, you know, say, come, talk to us, send us emails if you don't want to come in public. I mean, kudos to the people that come here willing to get up, you know, sit in front of a microphone and talk to this group, be on the TV. But if you're not comfortable doing that, send us the emails, you know, call us on the phone. I don't get that, you know, I don't see it, you know, it just doesn't come through to me. So, it's a challenge and it's a challenge everywhere. It's not just here.
Oh, yeah, it's everywhere.
So, anybody else for public comment?
Hi, Chris, Mile 3205 West Canal Road. And I'd just like to add to that, I think this is all great conversation and, and transparency and communication are kind of key to, to all of this. And, um, so there's email blasts and all these things. My, my wife knows my daughter's grade before she does. I mean, it's, it's that quick. So there are ways to communicate to the public that don't cost that much. I was just thinking that, uh, a $90 million project, which it could be after the bond's paid, is probably worth a significant communication effort. Like that is by itself, that's, that's letters, that's pamphlets, that's all these things that should be communicated to the public. And if you're going to spend that kind of money and you don't want the backlash, you're going to have to invest some money upfront. So as you go through the process, I think you really need to consider sending actual physical pieces of mail out to individuals so that they understand the process, what's happening, so you don't get the backlash that you might get if they don't otherwise hear about it. Um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. We've actually had that conversation on several occasions, Mr. Cherry and off to the side, that, you know, we do need a communication strategy related to something as major as this. And I know he's mentioned publicly here about maybe some, what I would call road shows and having displays in public, you know, facilities, um, that people could see there. And again, letters, you know, things like that, just as updates. I think a lot of that is really critical once we get to that architectural phase, you know, and where that project is really thinking about, you know, starting. So, thank you very much for comments. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Future meeting announcements, we will be having an executive, executive session immediately following this meeting to discuss a personnel matter. Uh, we do have our board committee meetings and board planning meetings this Thursday. Uh, committee meetings begin at 6 o'clock PM and our official planning meeting will be at 7 o'clock PM. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Ooh.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming, everybody.